Mr. Zawada. Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Duroff.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott. Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
We had no previous executive session, so we can start with welcome from the Washington Elementary School.
Good evening, welcome. I'm Lisa D'Enzo, the principal here at Washington. First, I'd like to welcome you back. I know it's been a couple of years since you've had the opportunity to visit schools. So, thank you for joining us in this wonderful, wonderful place, and just welcome. It truly is, Washington truly is an incredible place. I've been pinching myself daily since my return in July as the reality of being the leader here is sinking in. The support of our extended school community, the talent and dedication of our incredible staff, and of course, the heart of our school, our amazing students. Some of whom you'll get to know a little bit better here in just a couple of minutes. This school is just among the very best of the best. As the new principal, there's been so much for me to learn so far this year. Things that make our school special. Just going to share a couple of those things with you this evening. We have a program called the PASS Program. It's a free program to our students, and it's run by the folks at the Bali Community Center. Their commitment and partnership with our school and our students have given so many of our young people the opportunity to form relationships with positive adult role models in our local community. Students go once a week and they participate in things like cooking projects and art projects. And they get to just sit down with an adult and dive into a good book. Another special part of our school here, and something that makes our elementary school unique, is our pre-K program. We have two pre-K classrooms filled with our youngest learners, I call them our littles. And a few of the most very patient adults are staff in the entire district. It's a place that I go when I need a little hug, or when my day is crazy hectic and I just need to be around some little, really happy little people. That's where you can find me, in the pre-K classrooms. Did you know that BASD's own version of Shark Tank happens here at Washington? It's one of the many creative learning experiences that are part of our elementary program, and that's housed here at Washington. And finally, I would be remiss if I didn't mention a program that is so near and dear to my heart. And that's our students and our program, the Life Skills Program here at Washington. It's one of the reasons that I jumped at the opportunity to come back here. When I visit the classrooms and I see our students throughout the building, it just brings me so much joy. The kindness, the friendships, and the lasting memories that not only form for the students in that program, but for all of the students in our building. And what I've seen is their immersion in the school, and they're newer to this school. And it's absolutely incredible to walk into gym class, or to walk into the cafeteria. And a lot of our younger students in Life Skills are learning right now how to make eye contact, and, you know, speak to people, and say hello, and they're doing it. And, you know, the other kids in the building are just responding, and it's truly, truly heartwarming. Staffed by the most caring, dedicated, hardworking women that I've ever had the pleasure of meeting with. It takes a very special person to work in those classrooms, and it just, it makes me so proud. It's one of the proudest parts of my experience here at Washington, so it's so wonderful to have them here. Before I turn the program over to our art teacher, Ms. Bigler, I want to take one final moment to recognize two people. They're not here this evening, but I've got to just give them a shout out. It's Mrs. Lori Moser and Mr. Jeff Lucarelli, who will both be retiring here in the next couple of weeks. I honestly think Jeff is at about forty-seven and a half years with the district. It's absolutely incredible, and they will both be missed. And on behalf of the entire Washington community, I just want to thank them for their service to the district and to our students. Now, it is truly my pleasure to turn this portion of the program over to one of my teachers and someone who I cherish and hold dear, and it's Ms. Bigler, our teacher. She would like to introduce you to some really, really incredible, quite nervous students that will be talking to you about our wonderful, wonderful art program here, Destiny.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. As you might already suspect, I'm not the greatest public speaker, speakers, so just please, Boyer Town Bear with me as I go through. Art is so much more than painting a piece or a piece of sculpture that can be made. It's problem-solving, thought-provoking, it's collaboration, reflection, and connection to self and the world around us. Art is all around us. It's the buildings, the clothing, the movies, the TV shows, the chairs we sit on, the games we play. Art touches us all every single day, although we don't always think of it as art. In a time where states are questioning what art is and what is allowed to be art, we need to take a step back and realize that art is human. We are the art in the world. Each of us provides that unique piece of the whole. Art education is the basis of sorts in the elementary world. It's knowing the boundaries to then push through them. It's learning how to follow steps to get to an end, and to have fun and be messy along the way. Learning new skills and applying them in and outside of the classroom. Nothing beats the moment when a student who has been struggling, seeing their light bulb go off, and that smile of "I did it." I have been so honored to share my love and passion for the arts with my students in the Boyer Town Area School District for the past six years, five years at Colbrukdale, and my sixth year here being at Washington Elementary. I truly have the best job in the world, and as special area teachers, it always goes far beyond the subject matter. We are safe spaces. We provide an outlet outside of math, ELA, science, and social studies, although we also work hand-in-hand with those topics. We all have our thing, and that's what makes humans so wonderful. We provide something special about ourselves and share it through our work and our play. As I think of my own education, I have been lucky to have educators who have believed in me, even when I'm my own worst critic. They pushed me so I could take the leap. That's why I believe art education is so important, and indeed, all special areas, because I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't have them. My grandmother always tells me how talented I am, as she can only draw stick figures. I always laugh because stick figures are art, believe it or not. Practice in any form helps to develop skills. Learning an instrument takes practice. Playing a sport, drawing a portrait, learning math facts, or to write and source an essay, they all take practice. The wonderful ladies that I brought with me tonight wondered, "Why them?" Art goes beyond the skills of the classroom. It's their character that they bring with them each and every day. They have chosen to take time during their recesses and during class to help prep materials, organize our learning space, as well as create on their own time. During class, they are always willing to give my crazy ideas a try, even if they are unsure at first. They aren't afraid to ask for help or to help others in need. With thirty kiddos in the classroom and one me, it's always wonderful to see and hear the collaboration, if I can't get there right away. I am so proud of them, and what they accomplish inside and outside of the classroom. I'm so proud of all my students, and I wish I could bring them all here. So, in closing, I thank Mrs. Moyer for allowing me this time to share my thoughts with all of you. I hope you leave with a warm appreciation for not only the arts, but for all special areas. Thank you.
So, first of all, Ms. Bigler, I don't know what you wanted me to read that for. You did a fabulous job, and I couldn't have delivered the message any better myself, so I appreciate that. As you all know, when I'm getting ready for student spotlights, I get to spend time with the kiddos. So today, I met Casey, I'm gonna have her come over here, Ava Lee, Aleah, you stay right here, Addie on this side, Ellie, and Meredith. I got them all right, right? Oh, yes! Okay, so, I had the pleasure of meeting with these ladies this morning, and where's Ava? Can you switch places for one second for me? So, I knew I wanted to do art at this building when we put out the board meeting schedule. I connected with Ms. Bigler at Colbrukdale when I was in the Life Skills Classroom when it was there. She has touched my heart with her passion for kids, her willingness to go above and beyond. And so, I've been talking to Mrs. D'Enzo about tonight since September. But today was the first time I got to meet the girls, and I joined them in art class. And we were having some fun, and we were talking about tonight, and about being nervous, and getting up in front of a bunch of adults and talking, and me potentially asking questions like, "How does art tie to history? How does art tie to science? How does art tie to math?" And what did you say to me?
I'm not really good at math.
Was her, "I'm not very good at math," as she is sitting and working on her weaving project, which is all about math, and patterns, and all of the things she's been learning since kindergarten. And I looked at her, and I'm like, "You're first tonight," right? Because that's what it's all about. Unbeknownst to you, you're sitting in art class doing something fun, and demonstrating all of the wonderful things you've learned since kindergarten, when it was about triangle, circle, triangle, circle. And now it's about coral, and gray, and white, and all the different patterns, and the lines, and all of the things you've done, right? So I'm gonna put you on the spot one more time, and I'm gonna let you go first about your artwork, okay? So tonight, each of the girls was asked to bring a piece of artwork that meant something to them, that they were proud of. So we're gonna start with Ava Lee's, and when I asked her what it's about, she talked about Scooby-Doo, which was not my expected answer. So, why did you do this drawing?
So, I watched a movie on, like, in, eh, about Scooby-Doo, and there was like an episode, and it was about a campground. So I thought, it was camp, it was called Camp Little Moose, and I thought, "What if I drew my own Camp Little Moose and played it out how I thought it was in my head?"
And you know what's fabulous about this piece of art? I know you're gonna kill me. She was all worried about you seeing the back of the piece of paper, which is all about more art, and this art is about her New Year's resolutions as a fifth grade student. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to embarrass you, but I think this is awesome, because you put art on art on art, and there's a story on both sides of this piece of paper, okay? So, my friend, how are you? So, Ellie's a little nervous because I was teasing her, because Ellie drew ice cream cones. No. Ellie drew marbles with shadows. I love this picture, because when I saw it, she was holding it like this, and it looked like ice cream cones. But when I asked her what it is, it is?
Marbles.
With?
Shadows.
Because I was holding it the wrong way, and that's the beauty of art, there's no wrong answer. I love that. Addie, can you show them what you brought? So, if you know anything about Ms. Bigler, you know that she has a fondness for video games and Pokemon, and they make their way into a lot of lessons. So, why did we pick this character?
Um, because it's my favorite Pokemon, and I like the pattern.
So, it's her favorite Pokemon character, and she likes the patterns. However, those aren't patterns that were photocopied, and she simply cut out a character. She did all of that artwork in black and white. Thanks, kiddo. Aleah, you wanna hold up your painting? So, Aleah brought a painting from home. Art carries over into her home life, and when she showed me this tonight, it's the first time I've seen it. Can you hold it up for all of them? And my question to you is, why is it called "The Girl"?
It's called "The Girl" because the time I was making it, it was a lot of girls like bullying and hurting each other, so I wanted a painting to come together.
How are you, Meredith?
Good, honey.
Good. So Meredith's a little nervous, so was Addie. We're all good. So, Meredith asked me for an easy question, but I'm gonna hold up her artwork first. And I'm gonna tell you that what I love is I asked her why she picked this character, which she also did in black and white. She loves dogs. This is a Pokemon dog, that's why she picked it, it touches another part of her life. What's your favorite part of art?
Um, I like doing clay.
Why?
Um, because I really like how you can make different shapes with the dough.
That's awesome. Clay is her favorite, and she likes how you can move it and mold it into different shapes. Casey and I did not meet until tonight. Casey, I'm gonna ask you to dig in your bag for me for a second. I'm gonna put you on the spot just a little bit. She brought three pieces of art with her today. And so, I was struck, because one of her pieces of art is string art, and it's a pineapple. And the first thing I said to her today was, "Did you pick a pineapple because they stand tall and wear crowns?" And that's what all six of these ladies do for me, okay? What a fun group of ladies. She chose to show tonight this piece of art. Why did you pick this one?
Um, because I like hearing all of the tiles, and then it has my initials on it.
So it's personal for you, right? Okay. So, this is the fun part, everybody, and I am going to tell you that this has nothing to do with the girls standing up here, and it is entirely my doing. So when you choose to grumble at your seats, you are grumbling at me and working with them. These six wonderful ladies are about to give you an art lesson on how to draw a Boyer Town Bear. Why are you going to participate? Not because I'm going to pay you, although that was one of the suggestions. You're going to participate because the nine of you are participating in Washington Elementary School's art show on May 11th. Tonight, you will draw a bear following their instructions. In two weeks, when you're done smelling the scented markers, you will return the drawings to me. Again, why? Not because I'm going to pay you, but because each of you will be assigned one of the nine sections of this building. From the time that we deliver the art until the time of their art show on May 11th, the building is going to vote for their favorite bears. The winner will earn the students, and you're all here because of the students, again, my motivation. The students, who's the group that's been assigned to the winning piece of art, will win a soft pretzel treat for their entire grade or section. So, there's our motivation. You're gonna draw your bear with the ladies tonight. You're gonna take them home. I'm kindly going to ask you to please finish them. They will be featured during Washington's art show. But they're also going to drive a contest in the building that allows a group of students to win a really cool, fun prize and share the love of drawing. So, my fault, my responsibility. You can call me later, you can send me texts and emails, but I am going to turn this over to Ms. Bigler and her amazing students. You're going to need your piece of white paper and your black markers. Mr. Saltanic, Mrs. Torscha, and Ms. D'Nacola, while you're not part of the contest, you are welcome to participate along if you'd like. So ladies, if you want to set your artwork down next to Dr. Obero or on some of those chairs, have at it, guys. Before they start, I'm going to hand out one more piece of paper. I asked Ms. Bigler why she had these samples sitting here. Her answer to me was, "Because not everyone learns the same way." She has to differentiate instruction in her classroom every day, all day long. So, if following along on the whiteboard becomes a problem, all of the steps you need to make a bear are within the reading system. Can I start?
Um, give her one second to pass this out. This is, this comes up drawing first, Ava. Don't tap the marker, we'll just keep passing. Sound like plant sounds?
Yeah, I like to start drawing first.
Because it's Aleah, then Meredith, so it's, I'm going to do it.
All right, ladies, you ready to get started? We just give them the demonstration on the board. We go one step at a time?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
Welcome, school board members, to your very art, for a very special art lesson. We invite you all those at home to draw with us. You will need a pencil, a piece of white paper, and a black marker, and something to color with.
The very first and most important job is to write your name on your paper with your pencil. First and last name, please.
Does it matter where they put their name? What I would like to ask is that you please put it on the back and then draw your bears. I'm sorry, look at me. I'm jumping in, taking over the art lesson, and they were about to tell me where it was going to go.
Next, turn over your papers so you can't see your name anymore.
I'm sorry.
Please take out your Sharpie and uncap it. We will be using this to draw our bear. The first step is to draw the bear's nose. The nose is a shape, eh, the nose shape is a sideways oval towards the top half of the paper.
The second step is the bear's muzzle. The muzzle shape is a large U that starts on one side of the nose and up to the other side, leaving space between the muzzle and the nose.
The third step is the bear's eyes. The eyes are circles, one on each side of the muzzle.
Where's the paper? I'm gonna bear. Lacazette?
Yeah.
Bigler, Lacazette. Where's the paper?
The fourth step is the bear's head. The bear's head is a large circle or oval surrounding the facepieces. The fifth step is the bear's mouth. The mouth is made by adding a small vertical line from the middle, from the middle bottom of the bear's nose. Draw about halfway to the muzzle, then add a little curved line at the bottom to add a sweet smile. The sixth step is the bear's ears. On top of the head, on both sides, draw a half C inside of each one, add a smaller C. The eighth step is the bear's arms. On the inside of the bear's body, leaving some space from the edge, draw two lines that end on the edge of the paper.
The sixth step is the bear's body. Add a curved line for the bear's head to the bottom of the paper on both sides.
The ninth step is to draw the Boyer Town B patch on the bear sweater. Begin by drawing a large uppercase B, not connecting the middle. Add two uppercase D's to create the bubble letter look. Add little lines around the patch to make it look like it's sewn on. We hope you enjoyed your art lesson and continue to work hard to finish them. Feel free to add your drawings as well as adding color. Thank you for your time.
So thank you to all of you for playing along. I am serious. I am going to collect them at the next board meeting. There is a space already picked out, so please color them and have them ready. They will be displayed without your names. Your names have been assigned to different sections of the building, and then a special treat for the kiddos for the drawing that wins, and they'll be part of the art show. This does kick off our art show season. From now to the end of the year, the different buildings will be hosting all of their art festivities. You're welcome to join in. I know Ms. Bigler was here throughout the break decorating. The building looks incredible already. So, thanks again for being good sports. Welcome to Washington Elementary, and I can't wait to see your work. Thanks. It's all about soft pretzels for kids. Um, I have a request from the audience. They would like to see your bears up over your heads so far. Next, I would like to introduce Robbie Ramsey, who has a presentation to give to the school board on an Eagle Scout project.
Good afternoon. My name is Robbie Ramsey, and I'm here to present my Eagle Scout project. First, we'll start with what they already have at the high school. In the back, you can see there's a bunch of computers back there. It's what they use during, like, plays and musicals and stuff for the stage crew. So right now, you can see there's kinda cords all over the place. It's made out of two old band risers, and it's just kinda unorganized and not very neat. These are some pictures of it. And the new installation that I'm planning will have surrounding walls. And then the new installation that I'm planning, uh, will have surrounding walls to, um, to kinda hide all the mess and make it fit in more. Um, and it'll be better constructed. So it'll have, um, new lumber running across the bottom with plywood on the deck. Yeah. This is what the new installation will look like on the bottom. Are there any questions?
Um, how long have you been a Boy Scout?
Um, I guess since first grade.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, pretty much my whole life.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is like the highest...
Yeah, this is for my Eagle Scout, so it's the last rank.
The last rank? And then you'll be just an Eagle Scout? Like, is there, do you, do you progress into something else?
Yeah, you can, you can stay in it and earn extra merit badges, um, to get Eagle Palms, which are like little leaf badges. Um, but this is pretty much the highest rank that you can earn.
Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, first of all. Uh, you designed the whole thing and you're building the whole thing by yourself?
It's gonna be me, um, anyone from the stage crew that is willing to help, and then anyone from my scout troop that will come down. It'll probably be done in a weekend. We'll just go in and install it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
So if I can have a show of thumbs up that Robbie has the approval to go ahead and move forward, um, that he just needed to, to know that he had the support. He has been working as well with Mr. Sheil. So, um, Mr. Sheil is aware of the project, our facilities director, and obviously it is, um, at no cost to the school district. So Ms. Denacola did not have to get involved. So, um, thank you, Robbie, for doing your presentation and for the, um, ability to be here this evening. So I, it sounds like you have your approval, and you can work out the details as far as when things are done in the back of the auditorium for you to be able to start your work. So congratulations. And let us know if there's anything you need. I am sure that there are some able-bodied people here sitting around that would be more than happy to, to lend a hand. So congratulations. So next, we have the, um, school board, uh, meeting calendar for the 2023-24 school year. This has, um, had some, uh, adjustments made to it, uh, per feedback from, from you from our last meeting. Um, right now, what we have decided is that the second Tuesday of every month would be held for committee meetings. And we have those committee meetings listed under the blue, um, area of the calendar. August 8th would be a policy. September 12th would be the education student services. October 10th would be held for facilities. November 14th would be education student services. January 9th would be a finance. February 13th, policy. March 12th, facilities. April 9th, education student services. And June, um, 11th would be a finance. There is also a committee of the whole meeting that has been placed on the calendar as well for May the 14th. That would be a, um, full voting meeting because we would need to present, um, finance and have a vote on the preliminary budget, correct, Ms. Denacola? Yes. Um, so that is what, um, I believe with the feedback from all of you, we would advertise for all of those meeting dates. Um, and again, they would be committee. They could be advertised as a committee with voting if we need it, um, to be able to vote, um, on anything you, as a result of that meeting. But that's it, uh, as I have presented feedback.
The meetings that are scheduled for the various committees, is that the only time you'd be talking about that particular subject? At those meetings?
Not necessarily, but they would be reserved specifically for committee discussion. That would really be up to the leadership as to, you know, building the agenda for other meetings, um, obviously in conjunction with myself. So I would say no, that there could be other opportunity as well, depending on the necessity.
I mean, if you're having like a facilities meeting, can we bring up finance to be discussed? That's what I'm...
I'm sorry, Mrs. DeRofe, I didn't understand your question. I, that would probably be more difficult if you were looking for specific information. Um, you're, depending on what your questions might be with respects to finance, that, you know, Ms. Denacola would be able to be prepared to be able to speak to. Which, for the most part, I would have to say she would probably be able to answer just about any of your questions, but, um, I, that's not what the purpose of the committee meetings being set up that way would be for.
And then the, the meetings that are scheduled, when is the meetings, when is the meetings gonna be before that so we can get that on the agenda? To show the transparency which was complained about before. So when will those meetings be that we can put it, they can put an agenda together for the meetings that are scheduled? I don't know if I'm saying it right.
Typically, there are not public meetings for building an agenda or creating one each, you know, week leading up to a board meeting. I do meet with board leadership, and we review the agenda. That is not, you know, public. We just discuss. Um, it's really conversation with respects to, uh, the administration and the board leader of that committee to talk about what it is that they would like for the administration to bring forward to the board for discussion. So I, I wouldn't say that we would need a meeting for the public to be able to talk about what information is going to be presented. That's, again, typically something that has been done in the past. If I had policy, um, information, when Mr. Hemingway was the chair, I would share with him a list of the policies reviewed, and then we would set an agenda and determine that those would be the ones that we would be bringing forward and discuss in, you know, open.
Right, but it was complained that, that we weren't transparent. So I wanna know whether transparency is in this.
I don't have an answer for that question. Do either of the gentlemen standing, sitting next to me?
Well, I guess if you're, if you have a question about, uh, the facilities or the finance or something like that, you'd have to bring it to us in an email as far as we could get together and discuss it and, and, you know, in the leadership meeting to put it on the agenda. Is that what you're asking for?
Well, now, if you're gonna have an agenda for these meetings, where is that information coming from if you don't have a meeting scheduled to discuss things?
That would be from the committee chairs.
I know.
Having, having just, having just a discussion with Ms. Torsha.
Well, that's what was done before, and, and we were told that wasn't being transparent. They wanted more transparency. So I'm wondering where the transparency is now? How can you set an agenda that nobody knows what's gonna be on there? Cause there's no meeting to discuss that.
I think you're gonna have a little more organization because the agenda will be set. And of course, any board member, according to policy, can be at those meetings, um, the meeting that's set on this calendar. The, the agenda will be set, but of course, you know, if a board member has a concern about facilities or curriculum, they can come to that committee anytime, bring it, and we, and put, we'll put it on the agenda. It's not, the transparency is for the parents as well as the board to be collaborating together on certain things. And so certainly, any member of the board can be at those meetings. Any member can, can be part of, of designing that agenda. They can just bring it to us. You know, any of the committee chairs, or I think we co-chair on the, on the committee. So that's, that's my understanding of what would happen. So no board members excluded. I think that it's going to be, um, public as far as being taped. Is that correct, too? Right, just like a regular meeting. So everything will be very transparent.
Ms. Joe, do you have a suggestion to make us more transparent?
No, I'm just confused. Sorry. That's all we heard before, transparency, transparency, and...
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
So if the committee doesn't have anything, then there'd be no reason to have a, a meeting, so we wouldn't have one. Is that what I'm seeing? Say, say the finance committee has nothing to, to report, so therefore there'd be, the, the meeting would not be required, so we wouldn't have a meeting that month. Is that, is that what I'm seeing? Since, since that's the only thing that's supposed to be on the agenda?
That could be one way of understanding it with...
I think it's the only way of understanding.
With, with the, the establishment of the dates of the committee's meeting, um, specifically, you know, for policy, um, I recommended that there would be two policy meeting dates to be able to review, six months and six months. That way, anything that needed to be updated for the start of the school year, mid-year, that there would definitely be policy meetings on those dates. The, um, student services, um, or, I'm sorry, Education Student Services Committee specified their three meeting dates. So that's five out of the, um, seven dates. Or, I'm sorry. That's, yes, five of the twelve. And then the same with, uh, finance. Ms. Denacola, um, specified the months that she needed. Uh, facilities, again, it would be good to have conversation twice a year. Um, so there's always something to be able to, to talk about. I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't have them unless we would get, um, strange weather.
What I'm looking at now is we're looking at one meeting a quarter for each thing. I'm trying to understand how we went from one meeting a month for every, for every committee plus a voting meeting. We changed that to a philosophy of having a, a committee of the whole so we could discuss any of the different committees or different functions at any different committee there, and that we could do that without any, any hindrances. And now we're going down to a voting meeting once a month, and maybe we'll have, let me finish. That was, that, maybe we'll have a committee meeting, maybe we'll have a committee meeting if somebody wants to have it. Not only is that pushing out the board members, I think that's also pushing the public out cause they all, they have no guarantee they'll have more than one meeting a month. So I think we're, I think we're moving away from working together and working with the public, more than moving toward it. To me, this is no different than the one that was proposed last month that said, "Meeting as required." I, I don't see a difference between the two. So I'm still not in favor of this.
Thank you. Um, so two things. One, I, I do believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that Mrs. Torsha said that we could also, if we, if, if we needed to, we could add a committee of the whole meeting kind of onto these committee meetings. If for some reason, a committee didn't have something to bring forward and we still had agenda items, then we would just convert it into a committee of the whole meeting, I would assume, and, or, and, and move forward. I don't understand why, um, why there was any confusion. This is a pretty general, um, standard way of board, boards conducting their business. Um, and I think that it actually promotes transparency because it allows the public to understand when certain topics will be discussed. Um, and it allows them to prepare better for that. So I don't really see any issue. I mean, this is honestly, I know when I was first on the board, this is exactly the way we, um, we held our meetings. So...
Can I just clarify that? We held them once a month. We held all meetings. We held every Tuesday was a meeting. One was a voting meeting. The other three were committee meetings. Finance, facilities, and policy, every single month. So now you're going from, so what you're saying, you're sort of smoking it over.
Not at all.
Yes, you're right, we did do that, but we did it every single month.
Are you saying that you would like to have four meetings a month?
No, I think, I think going back to what we just did, we've been doing, which is to have a voting meeting, have a meeting of the whole, where any, any committee issue can be brought up or put forward is the way we should do it. I don't know why we're moving from that.
I, I don't...
Not only that, the, the, you're talking about the public being better prepared. Well, the public will have possibly less chances to talk to the board because if a meeting is not, if there's nothing coming forward for finance, or just, let's say, policy, then there's no meeting that month. So the, the, the public only gets to go to one meeting. So we're not, instead of being more open to the public, we're about to become less.
So I disagree with that. Um, as I said, I think that these meetings will happen. I know for myself, Ms. Scott and I worked together, kind of thought about when it makes sense to have education meetings, and then we asked for administration's input um, because we wanted to make sure that it made sense to the entire team. And the point of it is to bring forward, um, presentations and information. I know there keep, we keep hearing a lot of things about getting back to education and getting back to the business of the board. Um, and I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, I don't think, I think this is a much more transparent process. And I think we're kind of in the weeds on, if we're calling it a committee meeting or a committee of the whole meeting. We're doing the work that is necessary for the district. Um, we're doing it transparently. We're giving the public opportunity to comment and to be part of the process as we should as a representative governmental body. Um, I think we're collaborating, and I appreciate the board's effort in putting together this calendar. Thank you.
Okay.
How much is our budget? A hundred and how many million? Hundred and... Hundred and thirty million dollars, and we're going scheduling two meetings. That's just terrific. I would like to see more meetings on finance and two. It's unbelievable. Thank you. I'm gonna have to vote no on this calendar.
Even when I put that I just heard, which I'm still not exactly sure that it's transparency. But... Yes. But what, what I'm hearing is now we're going to, the committee's gonna hold early meetings, and the board will get a briefing quarterly. I'm still trying to figure out how that brings the board more into finding things out. And it sounds to me like the board is necessarily being pushed out, and the committees are doing their own thing. And then it comes forward when they feel like they wanna tell us something. So, and not only that, that's the same thing with the public. So the public doesn't get to go to your meetings, and the public doesn't get to see a committee meeting every month unless you decide you wanna talk to them. So I, I'm still a no.
So I don't think we had any committee meetings at all last year. We had one actual committee meeting last year, correct?
Yeah, committee meetings of the whole is what we did, which meant anything could come forward in any one of the meetings. So no matter which, which committee you wanted to discuss, if you wanna discuss finance, policy, or something else, it came, it came for that meeting. And you could have more than one of those things. You could have policy and finance. So if you, if you, if you set up and you say this is a finance meeting, if you decide that Friday or you wanna change it, you then have to put out public notification. It's no longer a finance meeting, you're gonna, you're gonna make it a policy meeting. If you do committee of the whole, you don't have to do that because it's all of the committees at once. So we're just adding to the confusion. I don't think we're taking away from it.
Okay. But there is chances where it's very possible that a month could happen where no committee would have something to add, and you would still have to cancel that meeting.
With a, with a, with a business or company that has a hundred and forty million dollar budget, there should be never be a month, a month...
I agree, but, but it's possible, anything, that's possible.
But it's possible, but it should never happen. But in this case, with this calendar, as it is, it says, it basically, it doesn't basically, it does say that that could happen more than one occasion.
Yeah.
So, um, if we're holding an Education and Student Services Committee meeting, say in September or any month, um, and there are other items that need to come forward that are not particularly connected to our committee, they can still be added to the agenda. Is that correct?
No.
If you're, if you're advertising for that specific, if we're not advertising specifically that it would be a committee slash voting meeting, um, you, you need to inform the... it would be a committee/voting meeting, you need to inform the public. However, whatever conversation would be had at that committee meeting, there's nothing stopping any carryover of any committee work to be done at board voting meetings. There's always a place for that to occur.
Right, so we can still discuss, any discussion can come forward? Yes.
You could discuss, but you can't act unless you post the agenda item 24 hours in advance.
Correct. We can discuss, and then the acting would happen at the voting meeting, which is two weeks later. And then all board members are still members of every committee, correct? Yes, that has not changed. So we are all still members of every committee and can act and work upon anything that's brought up in a committee meeting.
A committee meeting is really presenting some type of information that you want to present, to bring forth to the entire board. And if there's nothing that is taking action, there's nothing that says that every board member needs to be in attendance for a committee meeting. It is a committee, you're doing exactly what you're talking about, you're discussing whatever specific topic it is, whether, you know, Policy, Finance, Facilities, et cetera. The action would then be taking place at the following meeting if there was any action that needed to take place, which would be at the regular scheduled board voting meeting at the, you know, end of the month.
Right, but because all of our committees are committees of the whole, every board member is still eligible to attend every one of these scheduled committee meetings. Yes, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
But what we're doing is, we're not advertising it as a committee of the whole meeting, we're advertising it as a specific committee.
Okay.
So that would be, I mean, not that, everybody can show up because you're an elected official and you're a part of the school board, you can certainly come, but typically when we have held other committee meetings, they didn't sit at the table. When, for, I will use the decennial census conversation, if you were attending that meeting, you were part of the audience, not necessarily part of the table for discussion. So that's the one example that I can come up with where we did something differently because it was an ad hoc committee.
Right.
Correct, Mr. Sultanic?
However, when I was first elected, I know we had committee-specific meetings, and all members sat at the table, and were able to fully participate, so it...
I think it was all the matter of the way that it was advertised, so we need to be specific about the advertisement. Although you are correct, when we would add on an additional Finance Committee, then it was, you know, a full, you know, board was typically there.
Right, and if there were a month where we needed to discuss two different committee types in one meeting, as long as we advertised it that way, we can do that. So if we need to have an additional Finance Committee meeting, or, I don't know, whatever, Facilities, whatever, as long as we advertise it that way, within, is this two weeks?
Twenty-four hours.
Oh, it's only twenty-four hours, okay.
Twenty-four, I believe, yeah.
Okay, so it can, we can adapt them as we need to, to move forward.
So in other words, just say at the August meeting, which is a policy, I believe, something comes up to one of our facilities, but we know about it that Thursday before the meeting. We can put that on the agenda for the policy meeting, a facilities document, because it's gonna be more than 24 hours that we would be listing that.
We would have to advertise it. We would have to advertise as well, not just adding it to the agenda, it would be a new advertisement.
When do we advertise?
Typically, we advertise all the meetings before the start of the board meeting calendar year, because each time that you advertise Ms. Danicola's name and Boyratown need to be added to it. If you do it under one umbrella, then it's all encompassed. Each time you add something, there is about a thirty dollar additional cost to re-advertise or cancel.
So when we advertise, and we are saying, "This is gonna be a policy meeting, this is gonna be a Facilities meeting, this is gonna be a Finance," can we put down "Subject to Change"? Would that cover us, Mr. Sultanic?
When you say "Subject to Change," you can't add any agenda items. If you say "Subject to Change," the only way you can add an agenda item that isn't advertised 24 hours in advance is if a majority of the board acting would explain that there's an emergent reason why you need to get the matter approved at the meeting and vote on that particular issue. And the legislature was doing this so that the public would have as much notice as possible as to what the agenda would be in advance of the meeting. That was the purpose. So you would have to be able to show that there was some emergent reason why you did not include it in the agenda.
So then we can make all those blue meetings, say committee meetings, say committee of the whole meetings, and make them what they were gonna be originally. Essentially, you could still have Ms. Nyman run a Facilities meeting, because that's what we were originally gonna make that meeting, and if something popped up, we don't have to change anything.
Correct.
And we'd save thirty dollars.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I guess my question comes down to, why are we changing? Why are we going away from the meeting of the whole to the individual meetings? I'm still not fully aware of why that's even being approached.
I think that was because that's the input Ms. Torshia got last meeting.
Okay, I didn't get that, okay. I don't know anything about that.
You weren't at the meeting? You weren't at the last meeting?
Yeah, I was, but I didn't hear anything about individual meetings.
She took Apple notes.
Where was it where we said individual meetings were we were gonna do? I never heard that.
No. Oh, she took notes.
So could we just kind of put it that it's gonna be a Finance meeting, but it's still gonna be a committee of the whole, but the main priority is Finance?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, we still have ways around that. It's supposed to be a Finance meeting, but the other committees will report, but the main objective is the one that's planned.
I guess you...
We can certainly advertise that it's a committee of the whole, and that it'll be a Finance Committee meeting, or a Policy, Facilities, et cetera. That does cover you, and a committee of the whole also, and typically we add with voting. So it would be the same type of advertisement, and we, you know, typically try to keep any other work away so that we can concentrate on the committee function. Mr. Bokhane?
But also, that would allow the administration, if they had something they wanted to come forward with at that meeting, to add it to the agenda, like it's a Finance meeting, but we have something on Policy we gotta bring forward that could be added to that meeting without any additional cost or advertisement, because it would be a committee of the whole, is that not correct? Because we also have to look, not only is it the board committees that are part of this, but also the administration brings things forward that aren't generated in the board. And I don't particularly want to hamstring the administration that they can only bring stuff forward every, once a quarter. So I don't think that solves any, anything at all, and I think that keeps the public more pushed away from what's going on. So I don't see, I don't understand the change.
This is your calendar. I'm happy to present it to you any way that you would like it. I know that I'm going to be here two times a month, happily, and so I'm happy to go back and make sure that it is reflective of the committees that wish to have presentations during those months, but also then to just add that it is a committee of the whole that will be featuring, you know, Finance to start with, you know, specifically, and obviously when we put the agenda out, then people would be fully aware of what else would be on there.
Yeah, if that's what one's agreement. I'll go, Ms. Scott.
Okay, so I apologize to the board. I was under the understanding that the committee meetings would still welcome in the board and their comments, but it has to be designated as a committee of a whole meeting so that the whole board can participate, even though it might be, curriculum might be leading at that time, everyone can then participate. So you have to classify it as a committee of the whole, as opposed to a committee meeting, correct? Is that the difference, Mrs.? Okay, I just wanted, okay.
So the best way I can, as an example, was last year's committee meeting, Curriculum Committee meeting. We went in as a committee of the whole, and then did our business, and then basically turned it over to Tony and I. The school district gave a presentation, we gave some discussions of what we thought that we needed, and it closed out as a regular meeting after that. But we were able to give a significant time, just based on curriculum, going over certain things of our curriculum. So I'm figuring that this is what we're kind of gonna do now. It's just we're guaranteeing a space to speak about something that was discussed in just the meeting between, let's just see, Tony and I on the policy with Mary Beth, or Mrs. Torshia, I'm sorry. But, you know, and then we would bring out what more we wanted to talk about in that meeting, and if something happens sooner than that, we just put it on the agenda.
Then we won't be voting on this calendar this evening, and my notes here are saying to change the blue dates to reflect that they are committee of the whole, but we will list the dates of the committees that will be represented on those evenings. Okay? Thank you.
BCIU?
Yeah, so today we had a Cola meeting, and we discussed, well, there was a presentation by Pasbo discussing the governor's budget and budget priorities, and it was very informative. I will be sending out information to all the board members, once that information comes to me, just the slides that were shown, and, you know, all the handouts and whatnot, so keep an eye on your inbox.
Ms. Rutherford, BCTC?
Yes, I have a bunch of stuff. The BCTC Early Childhood Education and Culinary Students competed at the FCC LA Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Conference on March 20th and the 23rd of this year. Individual winners were Jessica Atkins Culinary, Silver Medal, Baking and Pastry, and these are all Boyratown students. And then I have Haley Conrad Culinary Bronze Certificate, Baking and Pastry. I have Julie Duncan Culinary Silver Medal, Culinary Arts. Candace Jones Early Childhood Education Bronze Certificate, Focused on Children. Griffin O'Brien Culinary Silver Medal, Culinary Arts. Geneva Roselli Early Childhood Education Bronze Certificate, Focus on Children. And I also have, I'll get to those at the next meeting. There's a long list. Thank you, everybody.
All right, Mr. Soud, I believe that you are up next with the Future Ready Index presentation.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to work with Dr. Obero, who's standing behind me in my shadow, to present to you tonight the Future Ready Index presentation. On an annual basis, we typically do an overview of the Future Ready Index, and as we have discussed in previous years, it is a unique circumstance based upon what has transpired in our community, in our world with COVID, virtual learning a couple years back, and our movement back to some normalcy practices in our district. I know there have been a lot of questions that have come up over the past years about how are students doing? That is an absolute loaded question based upon what you choose to look at. So our hope tonight is that we provide you an opportunity, that if everybody takes a look and you have this in your packet from this week at futurereadypa.org, that's the website you go to, and that's going to give you the opportunity to really look at very specific information. All of our nine building have information that's in there. We're gonna share with you an overview, because to really show individual scores in each individual building can show a lot of peaks and valleys. We're gonna show you some averages across the district, and then at your leisure, if you go digging into the information, I know with Mrs. Hogan and Mrs. Scott, we have tried to educate them as much as possible because they are the chairs of the Education Student Services Committee, and I know they've asked many questions over the past couple months, and we've done our best to answer them. So again, tonight is an overview for you to be able to get a perspective, and then go in there and dig on your own, and absolutely, if you have questions based upon the information you see on the website, you have the ability to reach out to myself, or Dr. Obero, or us for the answers. So just as a quick overview, the Future Ready Index has been around for multiple years. What is really exciting about the Future Ready Index, and I can't believe I'm actually saying that, with respect to something that has been coordinated by the state, I do smile when I say that, but they really have looked at more than just standardized test scores for our students. And that truly is a celebration, because I remember back to my days within the building, as a principal, you waited for those test scores to come out, and sometimes there were highlights, sometimes there were lowlights, and there were really no other kinds of indicators of how students were doing, and you felt really deflated if your kids didn't quite perform the way you expected them to, and it was based upon the score that they scored on that particular day. Now there are other ways, that's student scores, academic performance, how students grow, student progress, and college and career readiness, which are three core areas that there are multiple measures within the Future Ready Index. So it's more of a comprehensive analysis of how our kids are doing. So again, that increases the transparency around school, and it also gives you information based upon student group performance. I'm gonna show you some information in a few slides after Dr. Obero presents about some pretty incredible discrepancies that when you see our social economic differences between some of our schools, I think you're going to be very surprised at, to some of that diversity that we have within our district. It centralizes data and information using a dashboard format, so you can click around, and it's very easy to utilize. And again, as we talked about before, it not only creates a comprehensive look at the Boyratown Area School District, but it gives you a comprehensive look for all Pennsylvania schools. So you can literally click around and compare how the Boyratown Area School District might be doing with a similar school district in Western Pennsylvania, and you can do them as side-by-side representations, which again, is exciting to see. But I do caution, and will remind you during the course of our presentation, that that is, it's kind of like, just do it with discretion, because making comparisons, really, there are many factors that we'll talk about shortly. Dr. Obero?
All right, so this slide just gives you some details about what you're going to see when you start digging into the Future Ready Dashboard, and a couple things to look for. You can see the purple circles, it's kind of hard to read from here, but I'll just tell you, those are dates that you see at the top-left box of each one of those areas. Make sure that you are paying attention to those dates. The current data that you see right now is 21-22 data. That's the most recent data, because right now, we are in 22-23, so we'll be taking the assessment coming up very soon. You'll see the calendar in a couple of slides. The attendance data on the very right-hand side always is delayed by a year. That's just the way the state does it. So that is always delayed by a year. So just make sure, again, as Mr. Soud said, when you're talking about, use caution as you're looking at things, make sure that you're comparing things from the same year and looking at those pieces over time. There are three key areas of the Future Ready Dashboard, as Mr. Soud shared in his quick overview slide, the first piece, there are state assessment measures, and that's really that academic performance. We think about our PSSAs, we think about our Keystone scores, and under each one of those three areas, you'll see some indicators that are represented in the Future Ready Dashboard. So under the state assessment measures, they're going to look at the percent of students that are proficient or advanced in ELA and math. They're also gonna look at the percent, I mean, at the academic growth in ELA and math, and then they're gonna break that down by... math, and then they're going to break that down by subgroups. In the on-track measures, we're looking at things like English, English language proficiency. They're looking at the attendance indicators there across the district. And they're looking at early indicators of success. There's a lot of research that says that if students are on grade level by grade three in reading, that it's going to lead them to be more successful in future grades. The same thing about grade seven math. So they look specifically at those benchmarks. And then the college and career measures are really making sure that we are helping students identify early, get exposed to careers that will help lead them to success in the future. So Pennsylvania has implemented career standards that begin really in third grade and move all the way up through 11th grade. The high school graduation rate is another indicator under that component, the industry-based learning, which is the NOCKD exam. Mr. Soutt knows that acronym. Now he can tell you. No, that's coming up on the slide. And then rigorous courses. So the, the AP courses that we offer, the dual enrollment courses that we offer and those kind of things. So all of these pieces together really form that kind of district report card. How is our district doing in all of these areas? So it's a broader look at Boyer Town School District as a whole. So when we think about the state assessment measures, so these are really those PSSA and the Keystone scores. Our students can score advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. Now, what's reported out on the Future Ready Index is the percent of students that have scored proficient and advanced. That's our students who are meeting that benchmark. They're making that score that we want them. We want everybody to be proficient, at least. We love it when they're advanced, but we want everybody to be proficient. So that's what we call the benchmark. That's the benchmark that's set for all students in a given grade level. And so the question we ask ourselves is how many students met or exceeded that benchmark level? So the example, we could give one for you guys. All school board members will reach a seven-foot mark in the vertical jump. Now, we're not going to test you on that, but that might be the benchmark that we want all school board members to reach that. So then we would assess you and then we would give you a score. And then we would identify the percent of you that met that benchmark or didn't meet that benchmark. Now, that's a little different when it comes to growth. That's the next measurement when we think about the performance. On, on the right side is looking at the growth of our students. So it's the estimated academic growth set for individual students in the given grade level. It's an index that they take and they convert the score with a whole algorithm in a system called P-VAS, which is the Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment. You have to really be a mathematician to understand how they do that. But they convert the scores of the students and they estimate, beginning in third grade, beginning in fourth grade, what, what a student's growth should be based on their previous testing data. It's pretty interesting when you start digging into that. And they're pretty accurate when you really do look at what the expected growth is and where we want to see students as they're moving, moving through. So an example of that would be, I mean, the question we ask ourselves is how many students met or exceeded their individual growth measure? Now, my individual growth measure, based on my previous performance, might be that I would reach six feet in that vertical jump. Mr. Soutt, based on his previous performance, might be that he would reach seven feet, eight inches in that vertical jump. Now, we could assume from that that I maybe didn't score as well on previous assessments in my vertical jump and Mr. Soutt maybe surpassed that benchmark in his vertical jump previously. So my growth score is going to be different than Mr. Soutt's growth score. The benchmark score on the left is the same for all students in a grade level. The growth score is going to be different. And that's where the algorithm comes into play. All right, so here's just another way to explain that. In the middle, benchmark and growth can be different. The benchmark could be low, but the growth could be high. So if you look at Mr. Soutt on the left-hand side, if the goal is that we want to reach seven foot in the vertical jump, Mr. Soutt only reaches six foot, four inches, he might score at the basic level because he hasn't met that proficiency level. But if you look at Mr. Soutt's growth on the right-hand side, his vertical jump is seven feet, six inches. His growth could be seven feet, six inches. So he has grown more than he was expected. The same thing then for me on the left-hand side. My vertical jump is seven feet, six inches. I would be advanced. We got this flipped. Yeah, okay, I should have the seven feet, six inches. Mr. Soutt should have the six feet, four inches. But you can have a student who has low, has not met the benchmark but has grown. And actually, we really, we're grateful for that growth and we see a lot of that trend coming out of COVID. You can have a student who scores high but doesn't grow. And that we don't want to see. So they can be different variables as we look at those scores. Yeah?
So in effect, what you're doing is goal setting based on, based on performance moving up. So it's a goal setting.
That's what the state is doing with that P-VAS.
Here's, here's where you are, but here's, here's, here's where we believe you get to. This is the goal we're going to get to.
Yeah, and they give us some really great data to look at and they will even give us percentages of students. Then how do we move that group into that proficient range? If we give them a little bit of extra attention here, it might move into, into that space. Yeah, exactly.
So Mr. Brophy, that is a critical question that we ask ourselves on, on a daily basis with our students. We have a data retreat with our administration and various members of our, our teaching staff, and we collect all of this information and we work on those specific goals. I mean, the goal to Dr. Obero's point is for everybody to score high, but we know not every student is going to score high on their assessments, but the key point is how much should they grow in one year? And we set goals based upon that.
So if that goal, if that goal isn't met, it, it, it gives you a forward indicator to circle back to that basic and see what you don't have in there to, to push for the growth you're expecting.
Exactly.
I, I, I think that's the way. I try to put it as simple as I can.
You, you are creating a, a picture of trying to make education as scientific as we possibly can, but the variables are our students. And the variable is how our students present to us on a daily basis, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But we'll also talk about at the end of our presentation, some of the intervening kinds of things we do to help support the ebb and flow of some of those pieces. Yep. So as I spoke earlier, this is an incredibly powerful slide with respect to the Boyer Town area school district. If you look at the, the top, and we're going to give you a little more information shortly, the Future Ready Index has provided a graphing structure to give us information based upon how our students scored prior to the pandemic, the years, and I'm going to say of the pandemic, and then the years as we're moving away from the pandemic. So you're going to see a lot of little roller coaster hills that have moved from a higher level and had some steep declines. And then you're also going to see some, some inclines that you'll see shortly. But one of the key components that I think is incredibly powerful for us to look at as a district, the data that's collected from the Future Ready Index also creates subgroups. As you can see, the student groups at the bottom, I don't need to read them all to you, but they're each different elements that are evaluated based upon the data that's imported into the state system. Everything from economically disadvantaged to military-connected families and special education. For those of you that worked in our comprehensive planning process, a few months back, we learned that there are a lot of pieces that we need to look at to help support our students, special education being one of those. But if you look at 2018, 19, and then the four years in, in succession, and you go to the 21-22 school year, remember, we're presenting information to you tonight from the 21-22 school year because we're currently in the 22-23 school year. So some of this is, is like an autopsy way after the fact, but that's kind of where we are in some of the analysis. So we call that, just from a, like a, a powerful word, summative assessments that don't necessarily inform us in a formative way to help make daily decisions on how our students are doing. So we'll get to some of those practices in a second. But I think it's really critical to look at that are economically disadvantaged. In the 18-19 school year, almost a quarter of our population were considered under the criteria of economically disadvantaged. All the way up to our current school, school year, it's 30.8%. And if you look at the graph at the top, that is the blue line. You can see all of the other subgroup categories are very consistent over the, the four years of valuation, but our economically disadvantaged has had a pretty steep increase. And I'll show you some specifics in our building, which, in our buildings, which I think is really powerful to look at. This is based upon, Dr. Obero does an incredible job of, of helping to support and write some of our grant structures within our district. One of the really critical elements of our grant structure process is Title I. How much do we get in a Title I grant typically on the spot?
Around $700,000.
So as I was just informed, we receive approximately $700,000, pushing a million dollars based upon the socioeconomic free and reduced lunch needs within the students within our district. So I'm going to highlight a couple areas up here, and I don't have a laser pointer, at least I don't think I do. I don't want to push a button.
The middle button.
Yeah, do I?
No, the middle, the circle, that one.
Oh, yeah. Wow.
Oh, new toy.
Yeah, seriously. So I apologize that I'm like, okay, so I, I was blessed, Mrs. Zarenzo was blessed to be the Coburgdale Elementary, Coburgdale's elementary principal for many years. I can tell you that when I started almost 14 years ago, Coburgdale Elementary School, I believe, had a free and reduced lunch. It's total socioeconomic disadvantaged population of the middle to high 20%, 13 to 14 years ago. Right now, based upon our indicators in October, and that's when we pull Title I numbers for grant structure, if you look up here, it's 51.30%. In my mind, Coburgdale's free and reduced lunch structure has doubled in the, in the amount of time that had been within the Boyer Town area school district. So you can look at the other buildings on the right-hand side to see what their free and reduced lunch enrollment is. But I also want to highlight, I made the comment earlier about the socioeconomic diversity within our district. I think it's absolutely critical to realize that new Hanover Elementary School is at 15.8. And if my simple math shows me 35, it's about a 35% difference in the populations of students that are within each building based upon free and reduced numbers. So I think if you look at the, the, just the mere fact of the differences, we have to make sure that we provide our supports as needed to the students that are within those particular environments. And you can look across the board here. One thing that we did pull information on is Building 999. You might not know what building that is, but that is our, our placement, alternative placement students. We had, as of the 3rd of October, we had about 62 students that were placed in alternative ed. 35% of those students were actually considered free and reduced lunch. As I stated earlier, this is a new element that's in the Future Ready Index that I think is honestly kind of exciting because it answers a lot of questions based upon what people are asking. If you look up here, and I am loving this laser pointer. I'm so glad we have this. In, in the, the indicator that is here, there's a little hyperlink here that shows a graph. That graph takes you to what you see here. So in any one of the buildings, when you look at information, we pulled a random buildings data, and this is the proficient or advanced in ELA based upon how students scored. So this is again, a four-year indicator of how students did 1819, 1920, 2021, and 2122. And you can see in 1819, these were the amount of students percentage-wise in this particular building that scored proficient or advanced on ELA. That's, that's English, English Language Arts. You can see, you can kind of, as many predicted, the downward trend of our scores based upon some of those, for lack of a better term, I'm going to call them the COVID years. But you can also see that in the 2021 school year, that was kind of our, our low point. We had a lot of inconsistent attendance with respect to assessments. I think we had shared that with the board before. And I think, again, you have to be very cautious as you evaluate data. But I am happy to say, as you see the upward trend of how our students scored in the 21-22 school year, you see the indicators moving up. This is the statewide average. And with the, the, the students that are in the different subgroups here, like the all-student group, it's hard to see, but this red line right here, and I'm sorry, it's hard to keep this straight like I'm shaking, but we are above the state average as our stu, students had scored in the 21, 21-22 school year for how they overall did based upon the state average for, for other districts across the state. You can also see economically disadvantaged had a, a bottom end here, but they're on their way back up. And also our special education students are on their way back up too, based upon the blue grid.
So we, are we giving good bit of credit to like our summer programs that were, to bring, because I, I, that's, that's, you know, that, that slope going back up, great. I mean, there's anybody, no, you gotta say that. But is that, are we putting a lot of it, that is based on our summer programs, which we're funding right now through our ester funds? So we have what, this year or next year for that? Do we believe we're going to be able to continue that upward trend even when our ester funds ran out? We're, we're in that position?
It's, it's a combination of our, our summer program, but also our teachers are back to small group instruction and, and one-to-one confering and things like that that we really couldn't do with six feet social distancing. So I think it's a combination of both of those. We've identified students based on scores, based on needs to give that extra support to. We also do before and after school remediation. That's not, has not been typically with ester funds. So, and we did do a summer program prior to ester funds, a smaller scale. So some of that will still continue.
Yeah, just don't want to see us drop off as that goes away because if it's, the programs are too important to get you back to where we need to be.
Yeah, and to keep moving up.
And, and just.
Get further up.
Absolutely.
And just to that point, as much as we invite many of our students, not everyone attends. So that's another piece. You can't force students to attend and, and everybody kind of has their own concerns with the ability to attend or not attend, but we do our best to provide that opportunity. Again, another quick indicator here, this is looking at just one subgroup and looking at economically disadvantaged. When you go onto the, oops, when you go onto the, I pushed, I didn't push the laser button. I'm like laser excited here. When you go onto the Future Ready Index, you can see different kinds of arrows. Anything that's red in the Future Ready Index indicates something that is of a level of concern. If you see a red downward arrow, it is something that we really need to be focusing on to help support. But anything that we see with an upward arrow is a positive thing. So this is just another indicator of that slope that we had seen before in the 1819 school year, how our students that were economically disadvantaged did or did not perform either proficient or advanced in ELA. Again, same data from the last slide, and then how the upward trend is going from here. So you can see that these are the scores. We had 65.3 in 1819, and it dropped almost in half, but 32.7 was two years ago, and last year was 38.2. So we're on an upward trend and the hope is that, based upon what Dr. Obero shared, instructional practices and the kinds of things that we're doing in the classroom, we hope to yield more positive results.
Okay, so attendance data is another key piece of the Future Ready Index. The state average for the 21-22 school year was 92%. Now, the college board, who does Keystone's and PSSAs, wants everyone to meet a 95% average. Nobody in the state really met that. So, but our BASD average was pretty good. When you look at the PSSAs in grades three to eight, we had 94% in that year. And then at Keystone's at BASH were about 93% when we averaged them all together. That bottom category there really breaks it down by grade level and/or by content area. So by grade level in three to eight, we had a range of 92% to 99% participation rate. In that Keystone piece, you see 72% to 96%. So that immediately raises question and concern, like why is that 72%? That's really low. So that we found was our grade level of students who were considered COVID proficient. If you took biology, specifically related to biology, during the pandemic and you passed that course, you were considered COVID proficient. Therefore, you did not have to take the Keystone, which is what dropped that, that percentage of participation. If you didn't pass the course during the COVID years, then you did have to take it. So that was why that was much lower. It's probably going to follow this group because their participation just across those Keystone years was much less. But we are rebounding with our performance. At one point, our performance had dropped by about 52% because of all the waivers and because of parents opting out. But we are rebounding. And you can see those numbers are pretty strong with the 94% and the 93%, which is above the state average. So we are optimistic that we will continue to get a good, strong score in the participation rate because that also then helps us see more validity within the numbers that we're looking at. Because the only things that, or the only scores that are reported are the students who take the test. So if we don't have a good representation of students taking the test, it, it can skew the numbers. So this goes back to the state assessment measures and specifically that academic performance, how many of our students met or exceeded at that benchmark level? So how many met the fourth grade standard, the fifth grade standard, the sixth grade standard? We just pulled that data all together just to give you an overview of the district. So when we are looking and we compared the top two rows are the 2021 PA state average and then the BASD average. So you can see in ELA, the state average was 54% in 2021, and our score was 51.5 in math. And then in science, you can see those scores as well. But then if you look down at the bottom, that's you look down at the bottom, that's the 21-22 PA State Average and then the BASD Average. And you can see that we made some improvement and some growth. The state average was pretty similar, dropped a little bit in science from 2021 to 21-22, but our scores overall continue to improve. The only one that dropped for us was between, was science in 2020-21, down to 21-22. Why would we suspect possibly that? Lack of ability to do some of the hands-on experiments, the labs, those kind of things that really do help engrain that science in our brains. So we expect that will continue to move forward as well. This is the specific, looking, looking at the number of students that are advanced on the PSSA state assessments. Of course, this is absolutely a celebration when we look at the students that exceeded that benchmark level. Same setup as the previous chart. And when you look across this, you'll see again that our scores from 2020 to, that's hard to say, 2020 to 2021, as compared to 21 to 22, have demonstrated growth outside of science, which, you know, we pretty much have a rationale of why that is happening, or why that happened, and we expect that to continue on the, moving forward. So overall, we are meeting or exceeding the state levels and continuing to move forward, which is positive. We definitely still have work to do, but we are, we're pleased basically as we're coming out of the pandemic with that growth that we are seeing. And this is the testing window. Like we said, this is, we are in the PSSA testing window right now for 22-23. That's the bigger chart at the bottom, and that is grades three through eight in the areas of ELA, math, and science. And then at the top is the Keystone window. Now, the Keystone has a couple different windows. They actually have two windows in the winter that you can elect into, and then they have a spring window and a summer window. We don't test in the summer because we don't have kids in school in the summer. We don't make them come in to take that test. We typically do the, the winter one assessment for Keystone, and that is often our retakers, our kiddos who didn't pass the first time or were very close, and they will retake that assessment. And then spring is usually that more finality of the year. After I've taken bio, I take the spring Keystone. And that's the testing window what we are, we are in right now. ELA comes up April 24th. Can't we? College and Career Measures is the other piece that is a component of the Future Ready Index. And this just kind of encapsulates the, the district as a whole when we looked at the Future Ready Index. You can see the grades there, five, eight, and 11. We begin this work really in second grade, which college, with college and career readiness. Over the course of elementary school and middle school, students must collect six artifacts representative of four specific areas of the college and career standards. Six in elementary school, six in, in middle school, and then eight in high school, which really becomes a really nice portfolio to help them, them determine where they want to go, what, what are their strengths, how's that going to support them in a future career. The state average was 88.3% in that college and career readiness, and our average, I'm really happy to report, was 98%. We utilize a platform called Smart Futures. We also partner with the BCTC. They come into the school, they do some presentations with our students at multiple grade levels. And so we really have started this, I think we have a good, robust program there. The graduation rate is another piece. The state average for the graduation rate, that's the four-year cohort. So the kiddos that start in the cohort in ninth grade, do they graduate together in 12th grade? The state average is 86.7%. Our, our average is above that at 92.2%. The industry-based learning is the students who take the NOCTI exam or any other certification at the end of their program at the BCTC. I think the next slide says what NOCTI means. Do you, you don't remember, do you?
No.
No. But, so this is an area where we have some opportunity for growth. The state average here is 28.8%. We have 23.9%. We're going to dig into that data a little bit more on the next slide and talk a little bit more about that specific number. Then, just like we look at the performance of proficient and advanced, and we isolate that advanced in the academic achievement, we isolate that advanced in the industry-based credentials as well. So 5.8% of our students scored advanced on their exam, on that NOCTI exam or that certification, whereas in the state, only 4.8% did. So we're doing really well with hitting that advanced benchmark of our students who do, in fact, take that test. And then the rigorous courses, the courses that we offer here, those are dual enrollment, those are AP courses in our ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. And we scored a 65.5% for that. The, the state average was 55.9%. So we're always looking to add, to grow, to expand that. We applied this year for the dual enrollment grant that would give us some additional funding to support expanding that program, getting some more teachers trained, because needing certain credentials to be able to teach those more advanced courses. So as we move forward, we're looking for that score to go up as well. There's NOCTI, the National Occupational Competency Testing Institute. That's NOCTI. That's, that sounds like a good Jeopardy question. So this is the, the data. We just got this from BCTC. We have two campuses for BCTC. We have a West Campus and an East Campus. So in the 21-22 school year, we had seven students at the West Campus who took the NOCTI exam. Now, that meant they were at the end of their program. So they were in 12th grade, ready to graduate at the end of their program. At the East Campus, 37 students took the NOCTI exam. Six of the students at the West Campus scored competent or advanced. They don't use proficient, basic, below basic. They're, they're either basic, competent, or advanced. And 36 of the students at the East Campus, so really one student at each campus, scored below competent. So that's a celebration. It's not a huge number of students that are at that program, at that level, taking those tests. But the bottom really talks about our enrollment from BASD. So in our population of Boyertown, 10th to 12th grade, we have about 1,600 students. Only about 236 of them actually attend BCTC. And we actually send a lot of kids from, from Boyertown to BCTC across the board. Were we the highest?
Yeah.
But that's only 14% of our population. So which could indicate why some of our scores look lower across the board from this previous slide, why we might be below that state average. Especially when you think about high schools that are like technical high schools and, and those kind of things. But we're always looking for more industry-based credentials to support our students, Microsoft certifications and things like that that we actually could do here at the high school. That will not be part of the NOCTI, but would also count as an industry-based credential. And just a reminder, Mr. Stout said this in the beginning. Mrs. Joyce is really good at graphics. She's our curriculum supervisor. So she's made this for us. And just a reminder that this is one piece of the puzzle. And, you know, how it all comes together is ultimately how we, we bring it together in our data retreat, our action planning work. And we really look at how do we best support the students in each one of our schools. And we have teams that dig into this data in the summer and continuously throughout the year. So while we're just sharing this information with you right now for 21-22, we've already dug into this pretty deeply. Additionally, this is some key pieces of our comprehensive exam, which will be, not comprehensive exam. Wait, I just went back to my doctoral days of taking that test, no, of our comprehensive plan, and, and we'll share some of the highs and lows and the areas of growth and our, and our goals within that as well. And Mr. Stout.
So to kind of summarize the part that is just one part of the puzzle, these are the elements that we look on to move our students forward. If you reflect back to our Earl meeting back in November, we talked about our standards for each of our levels of instruction. The focus on those essential standards is critical to help to move our students forward. We do our best to make data-driven instruction. What does the data tell us and what kinds of next steps do we do? To Dr. Barrow's point earlier, now that we're moving away from the COVID pandemic, we are able to do very effective instructional practices, small group instruction, that we know yield high results. So we're excited about that. Another big component is connecting with our students, making sure that we have the ability to make connections, create relevance with our students to move them forward academically. One of our high-tech terms that we talk about is response to instruction and intervention. And that, in its simplest form, are three levels, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. As you see the pyramid at the bottom, Tier Three, Tier One supports are all of the critical, just daily practices that happen within our classrooms. Tier Two is a more supportive intervention support that happens. And Tier Three interventions are our very focused interventions to support kids that might be struggling in particular areas. And in our buildings, we have our response to instruction, intervention, instructional practice models. And finally, Mr. Brophy brought up the point, our summer intervention program. In my years here within the Boyertown Area School District, we have always been able to support our students in summer intervention, but because of ESSER funds, we've been able to support more students and provide more resources for them during the course of the summers that we have not been able to prior to some of those pandemic-related resources. Moving forward, again, it'll be critical for us to really support the work of our teachers as they continue to identify and respond to the students' needs and instructionally support students where they are based upon the areas of strengths to support their opportunities for growth. Continue to monitor our student scores on the Future Ready Index, looking for trends over time. And finally, as we stated numerous times in this presentation, to truly use caution when drawing conclusions and making comparisons between students, between different buildings, because there are so many elements that can drive what is the rationale for why students might be performing the way they are. And that is the end of our presentation. So any questions? A lot of information to take in in 35 minutes of time. Mrs. Scott.
I don't really have a question, question, but I just want to say that the presentation was great. Thank you so much for your time. I know it takes time to put it together. And also, I'm glad to see that trajectory going up. And it looks like if we keep it that same, we might be back up at 2019 and maybe by the end of next year, or closer to it. I'm excited to see what we do at the end of this school year.
If, if you, just to chime in there for a second, if you truly dig into the data, you will find areas and pockets that actually are up to that point already, which is really exciting to see. We just wanted to give you the opportunity to dig and find some of that information on your own because we don't really want to draw specific comparisons between schools, and we wanted to show overall averages.
Right, yeah, we talked about that, and I did see that. And so I am excited to see that. I did, and, and so in 2019, we had summer programs, but not, we didn't have the ESSER funds, obviously, and, and we were up there. So hopefully, as we get up there, maybe the ESSER funds won't become a need, but if they are, certainly, you know, that's what we're here for, to meet that, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank, thank you, everyone.
Approve of the March 28th, 2023 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes.
Hogan moves.
Nyman, seconds.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, under the superintendent's itemized agenda, we will not be voting on the 2023-2024 Board of School Directors Meeting Calendar, so that will be moved to the next meeting. So next, we have the solicitor's appointment. So I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the solicitor appointment for fiscal year 2023, 2024 as presented.
Hogan, seconds.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yeah.
Mr. Pennarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
On behalf of my firm, thank you very much. Working on year 46. Some of you were young children at the time, or not even born.
Next, I'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the following overnight trip as listed. The overnight trip is for, the, the purpose of this trip is for approximate, for one BASH student to travel to Kalahari Resort and, and East Rousberg High School, Poconos, for April 19th, 2023 through April 22nd. This is the all-state band trip. Nyman moves.
Hogan, second.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
Hogan moves. Geroff, second.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy. Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Publican Period, Kevin Kessler.
Good evening. Good evening. I would also, like Mrs. Drenzo did, like to welcome you back to Washington. My name is Kevin Kessler, and I am the president of the Parent Teacher Organization here at Washington. Our PTO has been approached by several parents this school year, hoping for suggestions from other parents for providers of before and after childcare for their kindergarteners enrolled in Washington's Half-Day Kindergarten Program, and some who will be enrolled in the 2023-24 school year. Parents of kindergarteners in Colbrukdale Elementary School seem to have a similar predicament. For those who may not know, partnership used to exist between the school district and the YMCA on Holly Road in Gilbertsville. The district bused kindergarteners to and from the Y, and the Y hosted, staffed, and ran the program. During COVID and the beginning of our bus driver shortage, this partnership dissolved. The district has also put into place restrictions on the transportation deviations for busing outside of the geographic footprints of our elementary buildings. The YMCA Y, the YMCA in Gilbertsville, being outside of the Washington footprint. The, I'm sure, unintended consequence of all this is an inequitable availability of childcare services across our elementary buildings. Colbrukdale and Washington are the only two elementary buildings without a childcare facility for children to be transported to. Colbrukdale and Washington do have after care at each school building provided by the Boyertown YMCA for grades one through five. I understand that we are talking about services and providers that are external to the school district, and I have traded emails with Mrs. Torsia and Mr. Stout about this issue and the district's challenges in returning to this partnership with the YMCA. The primary concern, of course, is busing. Forgive my ignorance to the schedules of bus drivers, but is there not one bus driver that would be able to add a one-hour run to the middle of the school day for the AM to PM kindergartner exchange at the Y? The other option that has been discussed is an all-day YMCA classroom in the school building that would be staffed by the YMCA. I've seen this situation work in the ONG Roberts School District when I worked for them. To this proposal, I know that the space is at a premium here, and to my knowledge, there is only one classroom here in this building that is not used for everyday instruction. If this option was pursued, the kindergarteners could flow right into the existing YMCA program after school at Washington for children in grades one through five with no need for any busing. There are several families that I've spoken to that are considering sending their kindergarteners to Catholic elementary schools like St. Teresa's, where aftercare is provided. The reopening St. Francis Classical Academy in Bali is considering an aftercare program to attract families who are in this situation. But having families leave our school buildings for private schools stresses our busing situation, too. I sympathize with the situation of the district, but there are families looking at making very difficult, desperate decisions about their jobs based on having no one to care for their child before and after school. I'm here today representing the, these families who really need this. I'm here to ask the district to consider any option that could help our families. The YMCA now stands ready The YMCA now stands ready to reinstate the before and aftercare program from a staffing and facilities perspective. Anyone who would like to contact me or has questions can reach me about this situation at our PTO email, ptowes@gmail.com. And I can put you in contact with the correct person at the Y if you have interest in the program. They're kind of taking a survey. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Have you considered asking them to do the busing? I know there's something there is that do.
That did come up. They said the price of them providing their own buses and starting that was absolutely exorbitant.
It would be for us, too.
Yeah. Yes.
How many families are affected, do you know?
You know, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Patricia Perry, who is a childcare director at the Y, that's P-E-R-R-I, her last name, has been collecting this information for both Colebrookdale and Washington to see how many families would be interested. I tried to get that information from her, but she didn't get back to me in time.
How many students are you estimating then?
Again, I don't really have an estimate. Patricia Perry hopefully would. I've been approached by probably 10 to 15 families over this school year. I, at the beginning of the school year, didn't even realize that the partnership between the Y and the district had dissolved. My older son, who's in fourth grade now, was part of that program, and I thought it still existed. I had no idea. Yes.
Just to give you a little history, this all started back when Dr. Fadley was here. And when he went to redistrict, he stopped the transportation of students to outside of their area.
Right.
And I know it hurt a lot of families back then already. So nothing's changed.
Yes, that's what I'm hearing. And yeah, I'm just hearing a lot of difficult situations that people don't know whether they're going to be able to keep their jobs. And that's an awful decision to have to make over kindergarten, which is just one year, really, so.
Mr. Kessler, Mr. Stout and I are both continuing to evaluate this particular situation, not just for Washington, but for the district as a whole. And we are in communication with the Y. So we just have not gotten to a place where it is palpable to be able to share or to bring forward. But the conversation hasn't stopped. We're continuing to explore. But we also need to make sure that we have equity across the district. It's not just Washington or Colebrookdale. I'm quite certain that parents are feeling the same experience in the other four buildings as well. So we are continuing to have conversations. So as we get more information, we will continue to share.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Word comment.
Mr. Stout. Apologize for being late. An allergy, sorry about that. I want to thank Washington Elementary School for their presentation and their hospitality. It made us feel very comfortable. Mrs. Bigler, wherever she is, I want to either kiss her or punch her because I don't know if I can draw a bear good, but we'll see how it goes. But the student presentation was great. And also the Eagle Scouts, as usual, they go above and beyond what they're called for. So I want to thank them.
I really enjoyed the kiddos tonight. The only thing I can draw is flies, but I gave it a try. And I thought that was pretty cool, the way they taught us. I never was taught that way to do work. And the other thing I have to say, I really enjoyed it here. I always enjoy coming to Washington. The other thing I have to say is it took us three meetings to approve the school calendar, so it looks like it's going to take us three meetings to approve the board calendar. Great.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Washington. When I was substitute, this was one of my favorite buildings to substitute in. So again, everybody have a great night, and thank you.
Again, thank you to Washington. First time I've been in the building, but I live down the street. And I appreciate the students coming out. I always enjoy that, and I'll do my best on the bear. I will admit, though, I didn't use the black marker. I used a pencil, but I won't erase. I did try to erase, you can't, so, you know. Anyway, also, Robert Ramsey, again, congratulations to him. You know, my neighbor's an Eagle Scout, and that's something they have all their life. He's the most willing and helpful person I've ever met. So it's a great thing and a commitment for a young man to take that on. And so, and thanks to Mr. Stout and Mrs. Obarro for their presentation tonight.
Thanks, Washington, for hosting us and all that. Very good presentation, a lot of fun. I do notice one thing in the back of my, well, my picture, it says Allison Moier. Just so, I don't know how that got there, but I just thought I'd throw that in there. As far as jumping seven-foot-one, I was a guard, and they didn't let me under the basket. Just say no where I am.
I could touch the net.
Yeah, I think I could touch it.
I might have nipped the bottom of the backboard.
Somebody pushed me out.
Yeah, I just want to echo all of my colleagues in thanking Washington. It was a really great presentation. I loved how interactive it was. My bear actually doesn't look terrible, which is shocking. And congratulations to Robbie Ramsey on his, you know, on his work to become an Eagle Scout. What an amazing accomplishment. And thank you to Mr. Stout and Dr. Obarro for the wonderful presentation. And thank you to my colleague, Mrs. Scott, who has been very helpful and has been a great partner and collaborator on the committee. So I appreciate everyone, thank you.
If my bear turns out horrible, I'll just take those students and buy them their pretzels. That's going to be easier on me. I did request a meeting of the board on our security, so I'm still looking for that to happen.
Ms. Nyman, we can't meet publicly, so if there is questions that you have for me, why don't you schedule a meeting, a time to sit down with me so I can review anything that you'd like to review?
I have a lot of concerns, so.
Well, you can come on in.
You'll be buying breakfast.
Yep. Come on in.
Pretzels. Okay, so I'm still looking for that. I'm still looking for, under old business, for previous public comments to be answered. I think that would be very important. This is the third time I'm asking for that, so if it comes again.
My concern is that public questions are not old business. It's not the business of the board. It would be a question. So it's really up to, you know, the board leadership, how they would like to handle those questions. I do, you know, we do get back to people with respects to their questions. Comments or wanting to change things aren't necessarily a question, to my point. And if there's something that the board leadership would like me to be responsive on that I have not, then...
I just think sometimes if we answer some of these questions in public, it'll solve questions being asked time and time again. So that's one of my reasons behind that. And I do have a question for you. Under the ESSR funds, when we were getting them and we voted no or we voted to opt out on the mask, did we lose any funding from that? So the rumor that's going around that people that voted no for that was because we were going to lose funding, that's not true.
The administration never said that we would lose funding with respects to that. I believe that there were people out there amongst communities that were saying that, and they were tying the monies to the masks, but it was really to help to support educational, you know, programming and moving us forward and to make sure that we had, you know, the tools that we needed to have in place during that time when we were virtual, not virtual, but there was never, ever a time that we were told that we would lose money. I think the bigger concern was, would we be able to stay open at the time, not knowing?
Okay, well, people have approached me and said that some board members were saying that the reason they voted no for the mask optional was because we were going to lose funding. So I just needed to put a stop to that. Okay. Thank you to everybody tonight. It was a nice meeting. The scout coming in and doing that for us, which is going to save us money, and also a trip hazard is excellent. So scouts are an excellent organization. Hope we can start getting more of our students involved in that. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody that put this on tonight. It was really great seeing them kids come in. And I want to thank Ramsey for being an Eagle Scout. I know it's a lot harder now than it was when I was an Eagle Scout because I know his badges are a lot more than I had to become an Eagle Scout. So he's really putting his drive to it, which I appreciate. And I appreciate what yous did tonight for us. It was really good. And the drawing, we'll see. I might have to take a pass on that. I'll pass.
I want to thank Washington for having us out. It was awesome. I'm going to go home and work diligently on that picture, and we're going to win.
I have another comment, sorry. I'm going to win, so it's on. Prepare yourself.
Okay, I'm going to move business right along. Upcoming meetings are April 25th at the Ed Center. May 9th, the Committee of the Whole will be at Boyertown Elementary School. And May 23rd, Board of School Directors will be at the Ed Center.